Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here today. This is going to be a great meeting this morning. We have a special meeting. So, thank you for being a part of our meeting today. I want to say welcome to those of you in the audience and for those of you watching on TV. Again, we are recording this meeting, so if you want to see it again or send it to someone, it's going to be on YouTube, both on our SedgwickCounty.org website as well as our YouTube channel. So, you can see it there. We're also streaming this live, of course. Anyway, this is going to be a great meeting. Primarily, we're going to be doing what's called a budget hearing. We're anxious to hear from people who want to talk about our budget for fiscal 2017. And we're going to be doing this today as well as again next Thursday, next week in the evening. I'll talk about that a little bit more later. With that, Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be led by Reverend Dr. Brett Johnston, First Presbyterian Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Let us pray. O God, in whom we live and move and have our being, we thank you for the precious gift of life that we've received from your hand and from our parents and from those who have nurtured us. May we be good stewards of this life as we seek to order the common life for the well-being of society, remembering that our task is not simply to provide efficient government services, but to remember that the consumers of these services are real people with faces and names and personal histories who are always in need of compassion and justice. Help us, O God, to seek the work that government provides at the local, state, and federal level is of a noble in when we reflect your good intentions for creation, calling forth order out of chaos, light out of darkness, and harmony out of discord. And just as you proclaimed your first work of creation very good at the close of the sixth day, so may this gathering's work be so blessed at the conclusion of their work. Thus, we beseech your hallowed spirit to rest upon the county commissioners and staff as they begin their work today. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend, for the prayer. And with that, I will go ahead and now go ahead and call to order the special meeting of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners for the date of Wednesday, July 27, 2016. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Enruh?
Present.
Commissioner Norton?
Present.
Commissioner Peter John?
Present.
Commissioner Ransaw?
Present.
Chairman Howell?
Present. Thank you. Next item, please.
Public information announcements.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kate Flavin, interim public information officer. I'd like to remind everyone who has not yet downloaded our app, our Sedgwick County Government App, to go ahead and do so. We've got a lot of great information out there, and it's also a way for citizens to connect to us. Right now, to talk a little bit more about the app, I'd like to bring up Dan Pugh, our emergency manager, to share with us.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Dan Pugh, and I am your emergency manager. And I'm going to talk just real briefly about the preparedness side of the Sedgwick County App. So, I'm going to get this up so everybody can follow along with us as we go. And we're just going to kind of walk through one portion of the application. Of course, there's a lot of things that you can do here, but I'm going to talk specifically about the preparedness piece and how we can use this smart, this application on your smartphone or tablet to be able to prepare and make a plan at home, build a kit, and to stay informed. So, those are our goals with this type of a setup here. So, as you can see, when you download the app, you know, you come up and you see the front screen here, and I'm using screenshots, so some of these are a little bit old, but the idea still works the same. And you look right here in the middle, front and center, right there where it says "Prepare," and it's got the big icon of, for Sedgwick County Emergency Management. If you click on that, that takes you into the Preparedness section of our app. And there are several components to this, and I'm a big fan of the way we've set this up, and I think the vendor did a great job, and I think the staff here at Sedgwick County who worked on this did an outstanding job putting this together. Because when we make plans at home, we, you know, write them down, and we stick them on the fridge, and then when the tornado comes, we go down to the basement or into the, you know, the lowest level of the home, most interior room. But we don't stop and grab the written plans right off of the fridge to take them with us. That's not something we do, but you better believe if I forgot my phone, I'm going to go grab that, right? So, this way, it puts exactly what you want right where you need it, right on your phone. So, real quick, I'll just walk through the different features. The first thing we have is my plan up in the top left. So, if you click on that, it'll take you in and ask you about who's in your household. This is set up from a household level, so you can say how many adults you have, how many children you have, whether or not you have infants or toddlers in the home, if there's anyone with special considerations. My daughter has some medical conditions, so I would select yes on that, and that way it can give me some more specific advice for somebody that may have some access or functional needs or medical history that's, that would require different things. So, also, a big portion here, pets. So, if you have any pets in your home, you can select that. Once you've set this up, it gets an idea of what you're, what you have in your household, so it can give you some ideas of how to, how to be better prepared. So, choose an emergency meeting place. This is the idea that if you can't have to leave your house, and especially for, for multifamily homes or places where, where, you know, you've got more than one, more than just the two generations in the home, or you've got teenagers or whatever the situation is, there's a lot of reasons this would be the case, but have a place outside your home where you can meet. So, we set this one up. If something happens, and then we go to the Aldersgate United Methodist Church here in this example, and you can put a phone number there for wherever that is. This might be a friend or family member's house, too. Just make sure it's something that's a little bit away from your home, so that if something comes through, then, you know, like there's a fire on the block and you can't get back to your house, everybody knows where they can meet. Go into the next screen. When you click "Next," then it allows you to set up an out-of-town contact. This is a great way to be able to have an idea of who you need to call, so who can coordinate outside. So, in this case, we picked good old Uncle Sam. But, you know, in real life, my grandma is the one that we've set up here. And so, if something happens, every one of my family knows to call my grandma and let her know that they're safe, and then she can help coordinate and make sure we all know that everybody's safe, no matter where we were or what's going on. We know that we have an out-of-town contact to be able to help kind of coordinate what's going on. And then you select "Next" again, and it takes you into a place to have a, an emergency contact, basically. So, you can add more than one contact, and you'll see why this is important here in a minute. But when you select "Out of Contact," and it pulls up your, it'll allow you to go straight into your contacts of your phone. You can just select somebody out of that and say, hey, I need, I want, if I have an emergency and I want to, you know, share my status or notify them, then I'll just go ahead and select. You can, you know, select your spouse or a close friend or your babysitter or whoever else you want to do. Put them in there, hit the button, and you'll have them set up. So, when we come back out of that, that sets up your plan. That sets up the basis of your plan. And the next step is to go in and start to put together a kit for your home. We recommend that you should be ready for a minimum of 72 hours, because in a catastrophic situation, it may be 72 hours before we can get assistance to you. Now, obviously, in most situations, you, you know, five, six minutes, and we have help to you. But it's, it's very important to understand that in a catastrophic situation, it may be longer. And it may be less time, but it may be longer. And so, we ask every American to be ready to take care of you and your family for at least three days without assistance. That's the goal, and those are minimums. If you want to be prepared for longer, great, but that's the minimums that we ask, is to try and be prepared for 72 hours. But that's really difficult to do, and what does that actually look like? So, if we select on "My Kit," then we get to be able to see how that might look. So, as you start to put something together, at the top, you'll see "Home" and "Car." We'll talk just briefly about "Home." I'm not going to go through all the options. You can explore that. But if you select "Food" here, you'll see that it autofills, it autodrafts kind of a shopping list for you based on how many people you said were in your home. So, we said that we have five people in our home in this example, and the recommended is one gallon per person per day, so it automatically figures that you need 15 gallons of water for three days. So, it already sets that up for you. It kind of walks through some other examples based on our home size. We should have 21 cans of canned meat or beans or something like that. There are some important steps, though, that I would want to point out here. Of course, if you have food allergies or sensitivities in your home, pay attention to that. Do not buy anything that your family will not eat. If you, if you don't eat it day-to-day, you do not want to eat it in a disaster. If the thought of evaporated milk or dry milk that you have to, you know, reconstitute does not appeal to you, as it does not appeal to me, then do not buy it, because having it in your home is not going to be helpful when you're already grumpy and trying to figure out how we're going to survive because something catastrophic has just happened. So, buy things that you will actually eat. Plus, that keeps costs low, because you just have the food in your house. You can rotate that out. You can eat them as usual, and it's not a big deal. So, I wouldn't buy a lot of special things with this. Just look at what you can do, and it gives you a shopping list. Of course, you can buy anything you want, but this gives you an idea. You can pull it right up while you're at the store and look at it as a shopping list and say, hey, today, you know, with this paycheck, we're going to start focusing on water. So, that's our first step. I'm just going to start looking at water. And maybe next paycheck, we look at starting to get some more canned goods in the home. So, you just do one thing at a time. It's not that you have to do this all in one shot. It's slowly over time. You can also see that there's, off on the side, there's a couple of extra things, baby food, pet food, extra water for pets, things to prepare for in case you selected one of those options that you have some, some different circumstances in your home. So, and it's, it's very important to think about your pets, what you're going to do both for making a kit for them, and then also if you have to leave your home, what's the plan? You know, it varies widely from opening a big old bag of food and leaving the door open so they can get in and out, or putting them in the carrier and taking them with you. I don't know too many people who aren't taking them with them, but, you know, we can, we can accommodate that. We've got special volunteer teams that will come in and help take care of our pets if we evacuate with them. So, that's a huge lesson learned over the years. You can also, when you come back to that, you'll see the "Car" tab there. If you select on that one, it will also take you into a couple of different things and just walk you through what you're looking for, for a car kit as well, which is not nearly as in-depth, but it's just an idea of what you're looking for. So, I'm not going to go through the rest of these. You can explore them as you, as you have time. When you come back out, it takes you to share your status. This is nice and simple. You just select either "I'm Safe" or "I Need Help." In this case, I said "I'm Safe," so it auto-generates that message. You can change that message if you'd like. You can put in something personal. If you say "I Need Help," it lets people know, okay, well, we'll use tornado as an example. It's come through your area, and it says "I Need Help," then we know you're affected. And I can put more information if I want. This sends it as an SMS text if you select that option. Text messages are far more reliable in a congested network situation than cell phone calls or data, things like email. So, definitely recommend SMS, and it pulls the people that you selected earlier as your emergency contact to be able to send those to. We go back out, and we go to "Learn," which is the bottom left-hand corner there. It gives you an opportunity to select on some different things, and you can go in and learn more about them. Some of these are linked to different resources across the country, but we're, you know, some of these are linked to things that we've, we've put together here locally. Let's be honest, when it comes to earthquakes, we've got some knowledge here. We've had a lot of small ones, but it's also really good to have the knowledge of people who've been through some much bigger ones and to work with them to put things together. But when it comes to tornadoes, well, we have some experience with that in this area, and we've got a lot of content experts here. So, it doesn't make a lot of sense to go out and get a lot of information from other people when we have tons of people here who put together knowledge. So, if you select on these, you can go in. Most of these will continue to work. They're, they're designed in the app, so you don't even have to, you don't even have to have Wi-Fi signal at the time. You can go in and do this otherwise. So, lots of things you can learn from there, just get more information. My favorite feature of this entire thing is the emergency log. If you select on that, this is the public site. It allows you to see what we're doing at the EOC and what we're doing through emergency management to be prepared day in and day out. When we have the EOC activated and we're posting things, we'll put things here like road closures. We'll put things here, damage reports, anything that we get that can be shared with the public. And I'm a big open government guy, so I think pretty much everything can be shared with the public, as long as there's not an operational security issue with it or a legal issue with it, then we're going to share it. And so, we can put that here, and so the public can see it. Keeping everybody up to speed and up to date with what's going on is vitally important. So, this is an option to be able to do that, and it takes you, this is also on our website, on the Sedgwick County website, and it just links to that from there. So, but you can go ahead and do that. If you don't have a wireless signal, though, then, you know, you won't be able to access this. But normally, you'll be able to see that, and we have stuff on there every day. And the last section is "My Voice." Much like the "My Voice" that you've seen on the other side of the app, this gives you an opportunity to report storm damage. So, I highly recommend if somebody wants to do that, then they can go ahead and put that in here. This is for situational awareness, though. If you have a need to get a response, then you need to call 911. This is not to, to be able to say, hey, I'm reporting this, and I expect someone to come out and do something about it. This helps us. This crowdsources our disaster assessment, and it allows citizens who want to help anyway to be able to put information through here. It gives us an idea of what kind of damage we have in the community. If you turn your location services on for that, it'll tell us where the picture was taken, and then we can work with GIS in our EOC to be able to put together a map of what's happened and give the decision-makers a real-time view of what areas have been damaged, what kinds of things have happened, and where the track of the storm or the disaster has taken. So, those are the different things that I just wanted to talk to you about today. It's, it's short and simple, but there's a lot of, you can take a lot of time to delve through this and really get into it. So, I highly encourage everybody to, to download the app if you haven't already. Take these opportunities to learn from it and make a plan at home. And I'll stand for any questions.
My comments are, basically, I did download the app, and I'm still exploring it. There's so much to look at there. And I have been using your favorite part, wherever that was called, or I forget what that was called, but basically trying to keep, handle on the status that's going on around me. I've been using that part specifically, and there's a lot of work to do there in terms of me setting up all my emergency plan and contact info, so I'm not quite done with all that yet. But it is a great app, and I appreciate you explaining that. I think you're doing a great job, Mr. Pugh, and I'm so glad you're in your position there. You're doing a wonderful job there.
Thank you.
Comments from Commissioners, anybody else? Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you. Very much appreciate it, but this is more, actually, more for DIO folks. I even managed to download the app, and I consider that a significant accomplishment. So, if, if I can do it, I urge the public to be able to do it and be able to get it online. There's some great stuff out there, and with the technology. Commissioner Howell was kind enough to help me, walk, walk me through with Q-List out at the new tag office, and, and so there's a variety of new tools there, and there's a lot of exploration. Once you get that app downloaded to explore even outside the boundaries of emergency management.
Definitely.
But I appreciate, very much appreciate your report this morning. Thank you.
All right. So, you know what the comments, just want to say thank you once again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. One more comment from me, Commissioners. Also on our app, you can comment on the 2017 recommended budget, or you can comment online, sedgwickcounty.org. With that, Commissioners, if you have no further questions, I'll let you continue.
All right. Well, thank you so much for the information this morning. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business, item A, public hearing regarding the 2017 Sedgwick County budget.
Good morning, Commissioners and public and employees. Welcome to the public hearing. This is the first of two public meetings or public hearings that you will conduct on the 2017 Sedgwick County budget. The second one is next Thursday, August 4, at 6:00 p.m. in the evening. We will be in this room. And again, both of these hearings are regarding the Sedgwick County 2017 recommended budget. The 2017 recommended budget for Sedgwick County, as presented on Wednesday, July 13, totaled $406,999,4, which includes a property tax levy of $133,201,437. This property tax levy is equivalent to an estimated property tax rate expressed in mils of approximately 29.359 mils. On Wednesday, July 20, the Board of County Commissioners authorized publication of maximum budget of $406,999,4, which includes a property tax levy of $133,201,437. With that, Commissioners, I recommend that you open the public hearing.
Well, thank you, Mr. Manager. And with that, I will, at this time, open the public hearing for the, regarding the 2017 Sedgwick County budget. And I do have a sign-in sheet. So far, I've got at least one speaker so far, so I'd like to go ahead and call up Paul Lavender.
Good morning, Commission. First, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to be here and to be part of this dialogue. It's a privilege that I don't take for granted. I'm Paul Lavender. I was born and raised in Wichita. I've spent the past six years away from home, though, and I've just returned about two weeks ago. I was living in Sydney, Australia, for four years. I was in Abu Dhabi for a year, and I was in San Francisco for a year with my wife. And a couple of months ago, we had the opportunity to sit down together and really discuss what are our priorities and what are our goals for the coming years. And with that in mind, we've decided to return home and to start a family. This is home. It's a choice that we've made, and this is where we want to be. And before I frame in my, my debate or my questions, I just wanted you to know where I'm coming from. I'm very socially minded. I'm a millennial, and I'm a libertarian. And unfortunately, I didn't have a chance to be part of the budget discussions last year, but I do understand that there was a large amount of public opposition to some of the cuts that took place, particularly among cuts that were affecting quality of life, public health, and the partnership with the city. As I look at the budget this year, there's one thing that, that certainly stands out, and for me, again, my priority is quality of life as a young person looking to start a family, just moving back into the city. And the concern of mine is the deficit spending in the budget. From what I understand, this year alone, we've already burned into cash reserves by $2 million. Next year, that's projected to be $4 million. The year after that, $6 million. All told, in the next five years, we're projected to burn through one-third of our cash reserves. To me, this is extremely concerning, especially in a time where we have relatively economic well-being. So, my question to the Commission is twofold. The first question is, what other options do we have as opposed to a deficit spending policy? And the second is, I would like to understand the process that went into approving such an aggressive plan. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Lavender, for your, your comments, and I do have at least one comment or question. Commissioner Ransaw?
Yeah. I'll address some of your questions.
Sure.
Thank you for coming here today. And if you, and if you want to set up a time to come in and talk more, we can go into a lot of detail.
I would love to.
First of all, I think it's important to understand that we do not have an operational deficit, which means we have enough money to pay for our daily operations. We're using our excess reserves to pay for some CIP projects. We have a large amount of reserves, actually larger than what we need. So, we've saved up taxpayer money beyond what we actually need even for a rainy day fund. So, we're taking a planned approach to use some of that. It's like you have a lot of money in your savings account that you don't need, and now you're going to use it, or, well, that, maybe that, I guess I wouldn't say you don't need, though. You have an excess money in your savings account, now you can use it to pay cash for something. It gets kind of complicated, but some of the money in our reserves are allocated only for certain things. For example, there's some money in EMS funds that can only be used for EMS, and our staff says we have quite a bit of excess reserves in EMS, far more than what we need. Therefore, we can afford to spend cash for our new EMS stations. If we didn't have that money, then we would have to borrow money. And that's fine. We borrow money when you need to, okay? But if you have excess money, you don't need to, then you can use that excess reserve to do that in a planned approach, okay? We're doing a similar thing with some roads and bridges. We have some excess money in reserves for roads and bridges. We're taking about $900,000 out of that. So, in order to use those funds, it, you have to make it show up as a deficit spending.
Mm-hmm.
But that deficit spend, unlike the federal government, when you talk about deficit spending, they're having to borrow money to pay for that excess spending. We already have the money, and it actually saves us from borrowing money unnecessarily, okay? Now, we have projected deficits in out-years. That always happens, but we will reduce those. We will not operate on a, on a operational deficit. We will reach a point that, we'll, we'll use some of our cash reserves, but then we'll reach a point that we will either have to borrow money or save up for them in the future. So, I see this as a very calculated, smart way to do it when you have some excess reserves. There's a lot of misleading information out there. I'll give you an example, roads and bridges. You know, we will borrow money when necessary, but in the past, we'd had routine maintenance that we borrowed money for every single year. We'd borrow $4 million a year, but we were paying 5.6 to 5.8 in principal and interest. Think about that. You're paying more in cash and principal and interest than what you're borrowing for road and bridge projects. Plus, we were taking 1.6 million and still are out of that to pay for the, the bond and interest. So, you're actually getting a net of $2.4 million worth of roads and bridges. You follow what I'm saying?
I do.
So, we were paying $5.6 million a year in principal and interest and getting $2.4 million worth of projects. That's because of habitual borrowing for routine things that should not have been done. You have to borrow for things that are appropriate, okay? I think it was earlier this year, late last year, we did borrow money for the 271 building and a few other things that made sense. So, I hope that, I'm glad you came and noticed that there's deficit spending, but it is planned and anticipated and appropriate. No one's more of a fiscal hawk than myself and concerned about the federal government, but it is important to understand that there is a difference in the deficits that the federal government has and that we are doing. It's because we have excess cash on hand that we can afford to use them. We don't have to borrow the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Norton?
Well, I, I take a little bit different view from Commissioner Ransaw. I, yes, I understand the difference between the kind of deficit spending we have in the federal government, but our financing policies have been very sound for many, many years. And I have not been in favor of spending down our cash reserves at a, at the level we have to offset some of what you would call deficit spending. We've worked real hard, at least in the time I've been here, to build up the cash reserves to be able to have that ability to do project and do capital projects over a long term and still have some cash reserves. The other thing I'm very proud of is that our finance staff has got us to the point where we have three AAA credit ratings. And that is important when you do go out to finance and borrow money and bond. And, you know, we just learned today that the state had another downgrade. They continue to go the wrong way with their credit ratings. Before long, they're not going to have a double-A rating. They'll be in a single-A, and that's going to raise the price of money when they do go to market. So, over the years, I'm very proud of Chris Cronus and his staff that have worked so hard to be sure that we maintain that. And if you look around the country, out of around 30,000 municipalities and county governments and other jurisdictions, there are very few that have three AAA credit ratings. So, I think it's critically important if you dramatically change your financing policies, if you use up your cash, if you get on the edge of not being able to do things, that'll affect your credit rating eventually. And I just don't see that as prudent management when we've got a system that, that works pretty darn hard. The, the good thing is that if you bond or finance over a long term, particularly for a lot of project, bigger projects and roads and bridges, generations pay for the road and bridge that's going to be used, not just the people that saved up the cash, that helped us- us save up the cash at the point when we wanted to do it. And the other part of it is if we get too low in cash reserves, you start eliminating programs and projects and other things you want to do as you run out of cash and you want to do some things. Now, KDOT, I mean, the state has robbed KDOT. They've robbed the Children's Initiative Fund. They've robbed CAPERS. They've done some other innovative kinds of things to keep the government running. But before long, not only will they not have cash reserves, they won't have any money to build roads and bridges. The Children's Fund will, and the tobacco money will run out, and they're going to do some things to fill CAPERS back up, which may be borrow money to fill a hole and use that money bled off. So I don't certainly want to go in the direction our state has gone with the kind of funding mechanisms they use to run government. And I think we could be on that path if we don't watch what we're doing, so. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Norton. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, I appreciate you coming out this morning as a person who has traveled across the Blue Mountains, has swum on Bondi Beach, and even been out as far west as Dubbo in New South Wales. I appreciate you coming in and visiting with us a little bit, and that is a preface. I wanted to respond because you've raised a number of interesting points, because every year, when we've gone through this exercise, we've had a long-term forecast that in the out-years has some concerns, and so we work to address them in the current year and so that the out-year concerns aren't as bad. But I think there's a strong consensus on this, Commission. It's my opinion. If anybody up here wants to disagree with me, they're free to do so, but keeping our AAA credit rating, I think, is a priority for certainly myself and I think everyone in county government on the elected side here. I'd like to point out the fact that when you say we have a deficit of sorts, we're paying cash for the law enforcement training center as opposed to taking out a 20-year loan and borrowing. It's, we're a little over $2.5 million. I'm thinking 2.6 or 2.7, somewhere in that range. If I'm way off-base, Lindsay, please shake your head, but I think I'm reasonable in that regard. But that's about half of what we did for a special one-time appropriation last year for the elephant barn and exhibit out at the zoo, which was over $5 million. So I look at what we're doing this year as a prudent use of funds, especially in light of what Commissioner Ransell mentioned earlier with the dedicated EMS money that can only be used in that single area and drawing it down to build new facilities, because frankly, we're having an increase in, we've got a slight increase in population in this county, but we've got a larger increase in EMS call volume. I would point out the fact that we've also, you know, there have been other spending that the county has made for one time for capital projects. And shortly, a little later this year, and Commissioner Norton didn't mention it, but I'll put in plug, the CAC Center, we funded $1 million of a much larger project, but that was a one-time appropriation that the county did to be able to help keep the children and public safe in this community and work in that direction. So there are some one-time costs here, but I think financially, this is a budget that is moving in the right direction at a number of different levels, with the caveat that if the tax base, in terms of the taxable assessed valuation in the county, doesn't grow, it's going to be a challenge. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. It's going to be tough, and we've been fortunate this year. The numbers came in a little bit higher than what we had initially been told or led to believe we were looking at. In fact, on a percentage basis, it was a good deal higher. So I'm glad that you're in here talking and expressing some concern and raising some questions, because there does need to be more public interest and public discussion when we've got a budget. If you include our Fire District, which is a separate legal entity, but combined, we've got a little bit over $400 million in our regular county budget, and when you add the Fire District and the county's regular budget together, it's right around $425 million. And for a community that's got a population of a little bit over half a million total in Sedgwick County, that's a big responsibility, and I appreciate you coming down and participating in our hearing this morning. And I'd be happy to join you with, if you want to meet with Commissioner Ransell, if my schedule allows, I'll try and sit down on it, too. Thank you for coming in and speaking with us.
Thank you, Commissioner.
There's other comments. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul, thanks for coming up here today. I want to say right at the get-go that it's really an extreme compliment, I guess, to our community that you're willing to come back here and raise your family. It's been a concern and an effort by many in the community that we need to be the type of community that attracts and keeps millennials in our community. I mean, you're the future, and you guys have the brains and the creativity that we need to have an attractive community. So first of all, thank you very much that you made that decision. I'd also want to share that I am in agreement in concern about deficit spending and have expressed this to our manager and our chief financial officer and to my colleagues that I really do not favor the deficit spending. It was stated last year in the budget presentation that this new approach to financing county budget was transformational in nature, and we are continuing down that path and that we are not using all the financial tools that are available to us. Legitimate, reasonable, conservative approach to debt financing, I think, is legitimate and the right thing to do for government, and we have decided as a commission that we're not doing that. And I think one of the things you said, is there another way? Well, there is another way, but we've decided as a commission not to go that way. It has impacted some of our services. I mean, we've had some very painful cuts last year. This year, we have been able to avoid that, and so I'm pleased about that part of it. It is going to impact a little bit our road programs in the future. I think our director of public works has said he's going to have to change the way that he's doing his programs from what we've been doing. And so this is not without consequence to do this. I think that, my personal opinion, if I had all the authority to say anything, I would, we don't need to do deficit spending. We can legitimately bond capital projects that are 20-, 30-, 50-year projects, like the law enforcement training center or like the new tag office that we've had. It's a great benefit to the community. Even the preparation of the 271 Building, the remodel expenses of that could have been included in our financing structure. So there are things we could do that would preserve our fund balance for real crises management in the future, I think, would be more appropriate, and we wouldn't be having to impose such tight restrictions on some of our agencies, even these services for citizens in the community through our health and public services-type agencies that we have that we had to restrict last year. So we are making this work, I mean, but we have put restrictions on, and we are spending down this year, as you mentioned, $4.5 million worth of our cash reserves. So under the circumstances that we, and restrictions we've put on ourselves, I would say that this is a good budget in that we haven't had to impose further cuts, other than probably some changes in our public works and our road and bridge projects. And we were not funding routine maintenance in our public works. Those projects that we were doing are bridge projects and repairs and upgrades that, a bridge is a 50-year asset. It's not an annual recurring project, so. I'm just babbling on here. I guess I'm saying that I'm agreeing very much with your concern about deficit spending, but probably, above all, I want to say thank you for making the choice to reside in our county.
Thank you, Commissioner Unruh. Commissioner Ransell?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Paul, coming recently back to the city of Wichita, I'm sure you're probably aware that this is election time, and so politics are influencing some of the rhetoric you're hearing here and in the media, so I wanted to clarify and point out a few things. First of all, we've made some decisions, this commission, that you, as a libertarian, might actually appreciate. We have worked to get the government out of your life. We actually rejected a grant from the federal government that wanted us to create dietary guidelines for our community and tell you what to eat or drink. I didn't really think that was important for our community. We can let you decide that for yourself. You know, we too care about quality of life here. In fact, I would, we were criticized last year in the budget, inappropriately so. I would argue that last year's budget changes were necessary and prudent and have significantly increased our financial outlook, while at the same time preserving quality of life. The quality of life of this community has not decreased a single bit as a result of last year's budget. It's actually given more, well, it's improved our financial outlook, and then over time, it helps us control the tax rate, which is good for our community. One particular you may have heard a lot about is the zoo. There was a lot of criticism about that. Well, the zoo, actually, we've got some numbers recently. It's flourishing. We're on pace for record revenues and record attendance. Nothing bad has happened as a result of our budget decisions last year. We've done things like the tag office and the law enforcement training center. These are issues that have languished for decades in this community, decades, and we finally got them done with cash, and those are quality of life issues as well. I'll point out a few things. I'm kind of disappointed in some of the comments from my colleagues and surprised. I've been in here, this is my sixth year, and the idea about using some of our cash reserves is an idea, it came to me from a variety of people. One of them was Commissioner Norton several years ago, talking about our excess reserves, and he'd like to spend some of those things. Maybe it's an idea of what you spend the projects on that's offensive. I'm not so sure. But I listened to a lot of people, to include my fellow commissioners, and they put bugs in my ears, and I think about this and we move forward. Now, I think it's interesting to know, you talked about last year's budget of a couple million deficit. It's important to point out that my colleagues voted to spend $5.3 million in deficit spending or out of our reserves for an elephant barn. That's why we had a deficit last year. Now, I'm a little confused as to why it's appropriate to spend $5.3 million of reserves on an elephant barn, but not appropriate to spend reserves for EMS stations or roads and bridges, particularly since we have some funds that are dedicated to those things only. So I think there's a little politicking going on here, okay? Now, let's be clear. We are not on pace, and we are not going to use up all our reserves so that we can't deal for a emergency situation. That absolutely is not going to happen. We've made some calculated and planned decisions to use some reserves that is in a fiscally responsible manner. See, in addition to this, the 271 Building was brought up, and in fact, here's another misstatement. Somebody said here that we've made the decision as a commission to not bond anything. That is factually incorrect. I have said this many times. We will bond when necessary. And in fact, it was last fall that we bonded the 271 Building. Now, in an effort to be fiscally responsible, we took a look at that 271 Building. You may not know this, but the original plan, I think, was to spend $15 million on this project, and we were going to have a bond and interest payment of $1.3 million. Now, the majority of this commission challenged that plan and said, we can do that in a more cost-effective manner. So through a variety of ways, we reduced the cost, and we spent some cash on some stuff. And so we bonded, I think it was a little around $5 million, and so our bond payment is now $300,000 or a little more. So we've saved $1 million in bond and interest payments on a yearly basis, which means we have more money now for everything else, simply because we challenged the status quo and the decision on how to do this. So these are very sound and logical, well-thought-out financial decisions that are sometimes complicated and difficult to explain in 30 seconds, and so it can quite easily be twisted and distorted for political gain, which is unfortunate, but that's politics, right? That's how it happens. I do appreciate you coming here today and asking these questions, and you or anyone else who wants to give us a call or me a call and come in and sit down, I'd be happy to explain it to you. And I think we're headed in the right direction, and we're making some good decisions, and see us in a few years. I guarantee you, we're not going to be out of reserves. So that's the long-term plan, and that's the vision that we have, and I think we're doing tremendous things here in Sedgwick County. Thank you for moving back here, and I think this is a perfect place to live. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We do have, believe it or not, more comments, but I appreciate you standing for questions and comments, and I'll let you speak back at us when we get done here, if that's okay. All right. Commissioner Peter John?
Let me ask a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure.
Paul, and I agree with my colleagues in terms of welcome back. Your English hasn't deteriorated by being in New South Wales. Let me ask you, how long were you gone from the Sedgwick County area, and when did you get back?
So I've been back just about a week now.
Okay. How long were you out of the country?
For the majority of six years. I've been back, I was back for a stint in 2014, but...
So you left in 2010?
2010.
Were you here when we had the grand opening for the downtown arena?
I can't remember if I was here for that day, but I do remember it.
Okay, because the reason I mention it, by far the largest project Sedgwick County's been involved in was the Interest Bank Arena, and I don't know, have you ever had a chance to go to any events there?
I have, yes.
Okay. Sedgwick County did not borrow for that event, for that venue, and it's over $200 million. I think the total cost was around $210, $215, but there was zero interest, zero underwriting cost, because basically it was a pay-as-you-go project. The county used a dedicated sales tax for that project, and so taxpayers have not had to pay any interest and underwriting costs in terms of doing that. And that's part of the challenge on the elected end in terms of when does it make sense to borrow, as Commissioner Ransell outlined. We did do that with the 271 Building, but in a project that's much, much larger, the Interest Bank Arena, there were no borrowing costs involved. And I wanted to, since you'd mentioned you'd been out of the country for a while, didn't know what your connection in terms of what events you might have missed while you were gone, especially if you've only been back for about a week. There's, I imagine you're kind of looking at things and saying, boy, this hasn't changed, but there, boy, that's new and different over here. And so beyond getting by the welcome back, I think it's important, as part of this discussion, in terms of, you know, making sense of, sometimes it makes sense to pay cash and sometimes it makes sense to borrow, and that's the challenge we have, and we've done some of both, but I'd be remiss with the largest county project in this century, the Interest Bank Arena, that was paid for with cash. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. And you mentioned, I think, three things: quality of life, public health, and partnership with the city. On the, some of the colleagues have already talked about the quality of life issues and the fact that the zoo has record-level attendance this year, record-level revenue this year. In fact, if you, I was out there last night, it was, the parking lot was completely filled. You couldn't find a parking place last night if you tried. It was enormous crowds at the zoo. And partly, I think that's in part because the Sedgwick County invested in the elephant barn when we did, and there's a lot of excitement in the community. So again, Sedgwick County has invested, if you will, in the quality of life issues. They did make two of those decisions in 2014, right before I showed up, so $6.3 million of deficit spending was decided by the county commission in 2014, right before I came to this position. And that was intentional, an intentional drawdown of the cash reserves. And again, that was for important stuff. It was for the zoo as well as the Child Advocacy Center. But in terms of the Health Department, I want to talk about this because you raised another issue... another issue, I think, is, somebody needs to speak to this, and that is, I asked for an accounting, because we just finished six months' worth of record-keeping for our Health Department for 2016. Last year, we were criticized because we took three immunization programs and put them into one. So far this year, compared to last year, this year we had 7,115 immunizations. Last year, same time period, we had 6,267. So we have an increase in immunizations since last year. This health screenings performed, we went from 1,004 last year to 1,060 this year, another increase. And bear in mind, we were criticized last year for eliminating what we called the screenings program, that had an average of just a couple of screenings per day. We've actually increased. In fact, the voucher program that's paid for by the state of Kansas, last year we had an average of two per day, this year we have an average of three per day. And yet, we were criticized for that program. And there's a number of other things I could read here, but in every category, either it's been level, or we've increased, with the exception of our WIC program, we went from 48,168 services provided to 42,000. But that's a national trend, has nothing to do with us not funding WIC. Again, another one of these false narratives that continues to happen in the community as we cut our WIC program. What we did was we returned surplus, excess money that we had no way to spend, returned it back to the state, so they can decide other ways to use that money, it's up to them. But we accepted enough money to run our WIC program in its entirety. And so, there was no cut to the WIC program, no reduction in services, no reduction in benefits to anyone. This reduction, this 48,000 down to 42,000, is a natural trend that's happening across the entire nation. Has nothing to do with us cutting the Health Department. Healthy Babies Program, we were criticized for cutting that. We went from 1,027 clients of women and babies served to 1,143, another increase. Sexually transmitted disease investigations went from 406 to 444, another increase. Every one of these demographics, there's increases in these services. And so, the idea that we've cut health services and somehow we've disserviced the community is just absolutely, again, another false narrative. It's not true. We have a great Health Department, they're doing a tremendous amount of work, and I appreciate Adrienne Bernletz, our Director of our Health Department, because she's a trooper. She accepted the challenges we gave to her, and she's turned it into lemonade. She's a fantastic lady, and she's done a great job at the Health Department. So, they're providing good services. So, quality of life things, the Exploration Place is doing great. They didn't have any, they didn't have to lay anybody off last year as a result of anything we did here in our budget. They're managing their challenges, they're doing a great job. The zoo's doing a great job. Health Department's doing a great job. And again, I think we've worked very well with the city, trying to partner with the city. Again, as Commissioner Ranzau pointed out, we had a couple of really significant issues that have been at least 17-year, maybe 20-year issues that we've solved this last year. And one of those was the Law Enforcement Training Center. And that is a tremendous partnership with the City of Wichita. We've operated out of a substandard elementary school for more than 30 years, and no one thought that was a good plan. And we've solved it this year. And we saved up money over the years, we added a little bit to that in this current budget to fill out the amount that we're short. But we have the cash. And I'm thinking about my own personal, private budget. If you have the cash to do something that's important, why would you choose to use a credit card or a mortgage if you have the cash? Because it just turns it into paying interest to essentially waste your dollars. So I think this is a smart budgeting, we're making smart decisions, we're solving problems, and it was very thoughtful. Again, you're right, we did receive a lot of criticism this year. And by the way, so far, you're the only speaker that signed up to speak today. And we'll see if there's anybody else that wants to speak. But the reality is, I think that the county's done a good job, and I don't think there's going to be nearly the criticism this year, but we'll see if anybody wants to raise those issues. But you actually raised issues from last year's budget cycle, and the good news is, we can look back now and see what happened. And I think the reality is, a lot of great things have happened. We solved our budget issues last year, and did it in a very thoughtful way, and nothing bad happened as a result. And that's the way I would look at this. So, Paul, you've done a great job standing there and taking a lot from us. I appreciate your patience. We've said an awful lot, is there anything you wanted to add? I'll give you as much time as you want to comment to anything we've said, any commissioner?
I just really appreciate your time. I feel like I've taken up enough time from the room, but I would love to take you both up on your offer to spend more time privately and dissect it if that's on the table.
Absolutely. You can give us a call, or just stop out front, and the ladies there will set up a time for you to come in.
Okay.
We can validate your parking.
Perfect.
Well, Mr. Lavender, thank you for your comments this morning. That is at the end of my sign-up list, but I'll ask the audience, is there anybody else that's here that wants to speak to the budget hearing this morning? All right. Last call. I'm going to go ahead now, go ahead and close the budget hearing for fiscal 2017 budget. We will do this again Thursday next week. Commissioner Ranzau?
I move to receive and file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Ranzau?
Oh, sorry.
No other comments or questions? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
I would just urge the public to know that we'll have another public meeting and a public hearing, and it'll be in the evening, where maybe possibly a different group, a cohort group can make it and weigh in. I'm a little concerned that we only had one. You know, over the years, even in really good budget years, we've had many people. And I hope that there hasn't been a thought process that maybe coming to the meeting, they're not heard, or, you know, that some of the actions we took last year, after a lot of people weighed in, felt like that they, you know, we didn't change our ideas about things. So I would urge the public to come out, if they've got issues, if they've got thoughts, if they've looked at the budget, to still come out and give us feedback. I think that's why we have public hearings, is to hear from the public. And I know we do that on an individual basis, out in our districts, through emails and other things, but I would encourage people to show up and face-to-face give us, much like Paul did today, their ideas about county government and how we should run a budget.
Commissioner Norton, thank you for those comments. We've been, we have been stressing the budget hearing opportunities every way we possibly can. It's on our website, we've talked about it at previous meetings for quite a while now, trying to make sure people are aware. We've done everything we can to get the message out. So it is interesting, we only had one so far today, but not for lack of trying on our part. Again, maybe it's just my takeaway, perhaps they're happy with the budget, I don't know. So we'll see. But other comments? Commissioner Peter John?
Well, I'd like to make two points. One, segue off of what Commissioner Norton said, we've got an evening meeting coming up. And as a commissioner who has strongly supported having an evening meeting during the budget, for the budget, I am delighted that we're going to continue this policy of doing that. And I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that, you know, we've had some excellent attendance and public input when we've had our evening meetings. We had one down in Derby in the first quarter in Commissioner Howell's district earlier this year. We had one up in Park City, at Park City City Hall, in Commissioner Ranzau's district. I can't remember if it was late spring or early summer, but it was, I think, sometime in June. And we've got one coming up in my district out west, and I'm looking forward to having another evening meeting, because I think it draws and attracts public input, and is a factor in our ongoing discussions of what we're trying to accomplish here. I think the evening meetings are a positive in terms of, it's certainly easier for folks who are working, you know, seven to four, or eight to five, or whatever schedule they're on during the day, to be able to come and attend our meeting. So I think having this evening meeting next Thursday, a week from tomorrow, let me be a little bit more specific, first Thursday in August, is going to be a positive on August 4th at 6:00 p.m. here at the courthouse. So, but I also wanted to kind of give a promotion for the upcoming evening meeting we'll have in September, out in my district in the western part of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Man. Yeah, I'd like more people to show up as well, if they can, that's why we have the one in the evening. I do want to make another correction. Last year, we did have a lot of feedback from the citizens, and we did listen, and it did make a difference. If you recall, the final budget that we approved on a three-to-two vote actually had more spending than the manager's recommended budget as a result of that public input in a variety of areas. So it did have an impact. We all didn't get everything that we wanted personally. I voted for some spending on things that I didn't think was necessary, but in an effort to compromise and listen to the people, we actually did increase the spending in that last budget. And like I say, three of us voted for that as a result of that input, and two did not. But that's how it happens sometimes. And so, certainly, we listened to everybody, and it does make a difference. Thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Ranzau. In fact, I'm thinking back about the additions to the budget. There was additions to a number of things people really cared about. You know, Project Access comes to mind, we did that last year. We also added money to, I believe, Exploration Place a little bit. I need to go back and get a list of those things. We actually added a little bit of money back to the Health Department. There's a number of things that we changed as a result, I think, of the public hearing last year. So I would agree with Commissioner Ranzau on that. Seeing no other comments and questions, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda, Item B, Hire a Corporate Communications Manager Above the Grade Minimum With Vacation.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you approve Consent Agenda Item Bravo.
So?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Chairman Howell?
Aye.
At this time, we need to move over to the Fire District, so I will recess the special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and call to order the special meeting of the governing body of the Fire District Number One for the date of Wednesday, July 27, 2016. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Andrew?
Present.
Commissioner Norton?
Present.
Commissioner Peter John?
Present.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Present.
Chairman Howell?
Present. All right. Next item, please.
New Business, Item A, Public Hearing Regarding the 2017 Fire District Number One Budget.
Commissioners, public, employees, I'm back. This is the second, the Fire District Budget Hearing. The second hearing for this will be, again, as you indicated, for the other, for my recommended budget. This will be, the next one will be Thursday, August 4th at 6:00 p.m. in the evening. And it will also be in this room as well. The 2017 recommended budget for Sedgwick County Fire District One, as presented on Wednesday, July 13th, totaled $18,64,749, which includes a property tax levy of $15,744,982. This property tax levy is equivalent to an estimated property tax rate expressed in mils of approximately 18.371 mils. On Wednesday, July 20th, the Board of County Commissioners authorized publication of maximum budget of $18,64,749, which includes a property tax levy of $15,744,982. With that, Commissioners, I recommend that you open the public hearing for Fire District One Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So at this time, I will now open the public hearing for comments on the Fire District Number One Fiscal 2017 Budget. I don't have anybody signed up to speak that I'm aware of. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on the fiscal 2017 budget? All right. Last call. Seeing none. Before I close the hearing, let me go ahead and close the hearing, the public hearing for the Fire District Number One, for the 2017 Budget. Commissioners, is there any comments or questions on this before we move on? Since there's no comments or questions, you don't need a motion to receive and file, I don't believe. Okay? Anything else on the Fire District Number One? All right. Do we need any type of motion whatsoever before we move on? Okay. All right. Seeing no other motion requirements, I would like to, at this time, go ahead and adjourn the special meeting of the governing body of Fire District Number One, and call back to order a special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
All right. This has been a special meeting, I don't know if we have any legislative issues today. Of course, the election is going on, and I expect to be a lot of things to talk about once we get through this one in one of November, talking to potentially new representatives and senators, trying to move our legislative platform forward. But that's a discussion for another day, and so we'll do that later on. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Other.
Commissioners, do you have any comments for other today? All right. Seeing none. I don't believe we have need for an executive session. We have no executive session planned today. So, Commissioners, before we adjourn, anything else before we adjourn? Commissioner Norton?
Just to let people know that Commissioner Andrew and I were at the Crime Commission roast of our sheriff last night. It was an enjoyable evening, and they honored him for his public service, but they also got a few jabs in. But it was a great evening for the Crime Commission. I was glad to be there to support our sheriff and the Crime Commission. But it was more of a fun event than it was anything else, but a fundraiser also.
Very good. Thank you for those comments, Commissioner Norton. Anything else? All right. Mr. Manager, anything else before we adjourn?
That's it.
All right. So we, the next meeting we will have on public budget hearing will be next Thursday, a week from tomorrow, at 6:00 p.m. here in this room. So I'd encourage the public to please come on out, and we'd love to hear from you. We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments...